The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, it's not the public comment section. This is the time for people to make comments to the commission. It's not a debate period, not a give and take. It's just time for members of the public to make comments to us. So you have a three minute time. We start with the members of people in the public. Three minute time limit and we honestly not get personal. So is there anybody in the room that would like to make a comment? Okay, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment during the public? Oh, we got somebody. And oh, the one thing I ask you is just state your name, where you're from, and if you're with an organization, just say that. So if you know for your representative.
I've lived here for fifty years. Then we've had problems for the last two years. My brother-in-law and my father-in-law's place, he passed away, a bunch of drugies on it. We got him run off. We did what the one Marl County Sheriff said, a little red hair go. We hope that it started to get him out of here. What they do, they go over to Marley's place, the wagon well.
Could you do me a favor? Could you move up here and talk? You know, true catching everything.
I've been here for fifty years, a little over fifty years. I've never, in the last twenty-five years of my life that I've been here, this is the worst I've seen out in that area in twenty-five years. I turned around, my father-in-law passed away. He had a gal that was staying back there. She ended up moving a bunch of drugies in there. They were just ram-sacking, going on our property, stealing, stealing and all kinds. I sleep in my living room on the couch with a loaded handgun at night. Because we have people coming on the property. We've called Marl County sheriffs. I got a list on my phone a mile long on messages. And we turn around, one guy walked up to my house with a loaded handgun, nine-thirty in the morning. And what did they do? Well, we'll go up and they were all criminal trespass. Everybody was on Mill McCade's place, this trespass of ours. Marl County sheriffs, we called them to the office, did all the work like we're supposed to. And they go up, well, we warned him he's criminal trespass. He can't go back on the place and be arrested. Here the guy walked up, I got pictures on my phone. It's off our camera system. Turn around, him with a loaded gun. Nine-thirty in the morning. And this has been going on. We run some people off the other night trying to break into my shop. I'm getting tired of it. In Marl County, you can call them anymore. We don't even call them. We go out and run them off. We can't get enough. Oh, we didn't see anything. We got cameras that shine clean back to my father-in-law's property. And one gal called us, one of those called me a lot quit making the phone calls. The one little sheriff here, because I know all about your cameras. But they turn around, I got pictures of the sheriff coming up to my door and everything on my phone. And they turn around. Coming up to somebody's house with a loaded gun. He had something, they were up to something. It wasn't good. And why the hell didn't they arrest him? That's that's felony and a half. I hear he's a felon with a loaded gun.
That's your three minutes.
And he should have been arrested. Even when he went through my gate, it's posted, private property, no trespass, violators will prosecute. They always slap them on the hand. Don't do it. That's BS. They should have been.
Thank you.
Chair, i- if I could get your name and address just for the record?
Walt Gerard.
Walt Gerard?
Seven five five four three Dealey. I'm just before the wagon well. I got forty-three acres there. I got about fifteen hundred feet of the highway. So my problem. And this is going on to, this is two years. Here I got epilepsy, heart trouble, diabetes. High blood pressure. I've been operated on my back. My wife's got a nerve disorder. We don't need the bulge. It's it's gone too far.
Well, thank you for that comment.
I want somebody, I want something to happen. I talked to a lawyer. I'll start lawsuit on Marl County. I want something done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the room that has a public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom? Did you see there was somebody on Zoom? Raise your hand on Zoom if you want to. Give a public comment. You guys see anybody in that? Okay, and also while we're on it, I'd like to remind anybody that at the bottom of our agenda is all three of the commissioners. If you would like to contact us that way, you can also do that. We've got our emails and our phone numbers, so. That's something we're always open to hearing from people. Okay. Let's go on with consideration of Dobson agenda.
Chair, we would ask, there was an update we didn't need to do on the consent agenda. We'd like to remove six B. Because it's just some language that needs to be updated and put that on the future item and. Is there anything else, Valerie? Are we good with that?
Believe that's all. Yeah, we've got correspondence.
So we just like to remove six B from the from the agenda for today.
Do you have your motion to accept the removal of six B?
I move to accept the agenda with the removal of six B. Second?
Second in all favor.
Aye.
All opposed. We shall carry. Okay, next up is our special business item. We got a financial audit for fiscal year ending two thirty, twenty twenty-four. Kevin.
Need to unmute, Sharon?
Kathy Wilson and Brad Bingenheimer. Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Ins, Finance Director. We have finished the financial audit for. Year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, and our auditors, sorry, reboot there. Our auditors issued, have issued their required statements and and. Kathy Wilson and Brad Bingenheimer from Singer Lee Whack, the county's audit firm. Here to walk through the results of the audit and answer any question that the Commissioners may have. With that, I will turn it over to Brad and Kathy.
Well, thank you for having us today. I appreciate the time to, you know, talk about the audit and the results of of it. So just for introduction, I'm Brad Bingenheimer, partner with Singer Lee Whack. No, Kathy Wilson is here. Kevin already introduced her and also Fierce Cat Talk, a manager with us who is involved in your audit. He's here also. So I'm going to talk kind of about the audit, you know, overall. And our reports, then Kathy's going to talk about the results of the the financial results for the county. So, you know, we're hired to give an opinion on the financial statements. And so in performing our audit, we actually use four different sets of auditing standards. And each of those sets of auditing standards has its own report. So the first of those four reports is the report under generally accepted accounting principles. And this is our opinion on the financial statements themselves. And we've issued what's considered an unmodified opinion, which basically says, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial position and results of operations of the county for the year ended June thirty-two thousand and twenty-four. One item in there, we do note that the county did implement a new standard this last year. Of provisions of GASB one hundred, which was applicable for the year ended June thirty-two thousand and twenty-four. And just made some slight changes in how certain things are presented when there's either a change in the fund between major and non-major or an error correction, anything like that. Just kind of changed that a little bit, not a very big change, but just let you know that that was adopted and implemented this last year. So in connection with our audit, we also have to apply the standards of the Oregon minimum standards for audits of municipal corporations. And those standards require us to look at two things. The first is compliance with specific Oregon laws and regulations. So as part of our audit, you know, we consider those particular things. We perform tests. And, you know, in that we noted just a few things in the budgetary process. You know, there were three small over expenditures in all the different funds the county has. You have three very small over expenditures of appropriation categories. There were a few errors in the historical information, that very large budget document you put together every year. So you know, just a few of those. And then just, you know, when you're doing the publication for the budget hearing, there's a financial summary. And, you know, as auditors, we'd verify that those numbers are, you know, read back to the budget document, and there was one error in that. I consider these very small kind of technical errors, nothing that indicates any kind of a weakness or a breakdown in your systems. So the other thing that Stan, the report under Oregon minimum standards talks about is internal controls. Now, as part of every audit, we come in and we get obtained an understanding of the internal controls of the organization. We do that for the reason to identify those areas that have maybe weaker internal controls that maybe as auditors, we need to pay a little bit more attention to in our audit. Also, in obtaining that understanding, if we identify anything that we consider to be a material weakness or a significant deficiency in those internal controls, we will be bringing those forth in a separate communication. Now, I have to report, we did not identify any of those. So we don't have any further identification of those in our, in a separate communication. Or if we go to the third report we've issued, which is our report under government auditing standards. That also talks about two items similar to the Oregon minimum standards. One is internal controls. Already said, we didn't find anything there, and that, you know, states that again. Additionally, it looks at, you know, beyond just the compliance with Oregon laws and regulations, but any other laws or regulations that could have a material effect on the financial statements of the county. And so, you know, we consider any other items that could have that material effect, and we did not note anything that would have a material effect on the financial statements of the county. So then in a separate document, but still associated with our audit, is our report of the requirements of the uniform guidance. These are the, our procedures over the federal awards that you expended during the year. So how the uniform guidance requires us to identify certain programs for specific audit procedures. So we dive into those and we are looking at testing two things. One, do you have internal controls over the compliance requirements for the programs? And did you in fact comply with the program requirements? And we, I, we did not identify any weaknesses in internal controls over compliance, nor did we identify any instances of non-compliance. So really, when you get down to it, this is about as clean an audit as you're ever going to get. With just except for those few little things under Oregon minimum standards, we don't have any findings to report. And there's also a separate letter we have issued to the Board of Commissioners that basically is a summary of our audit. Just some additional information to you and really nothing to talk about there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy Wilson to kind of highlight the financial aspects of the county.
There, that's great. Thank you. I wasn't able to get unmuted there. Thanks for having us today. We appreciate the Commissioners taking the time to allow us to come and present and talk about the county's financial position for this year. So as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the county is in a pretty good position. From a government-wide standpoint, your unrestricted net position is twenty-two million. The biggest balances that are on the financial statement, cash, obviously, we did have some increases in investment earnings this year over the prior year, which is great to see the market come back a little bit. We'll see how that goes over the next couple of years. And then capital assets are another big area. You have about seventy-six million in net capital assets that the county uses to do their operations, to house their operations and then equipment and such, and infrastructure in the county. There was an increase in the capital assets this year of about seven million. So you added some you had some road construction, you had some airport construction, and then you had some big equipment that you added this year. Greater Pete Truck Sheriff's received some new vehicles there. And then one of the things I'd like to point out is in with your liabilities, long-term liabilities. The net pension liability rests in there, and that had about an increase of about a million this year. And it's twenty-five million of the thirty-one million that's reported there for long-term assets. And this is the result of implementation of GASB sixty-eight some years back. The requirement to present the liability of retirement and other plans that the county is responsible for paying as people retire. Of course, this measures as if the county was going to have to pay all of this today. And so it's kind of, it's a really big number, but it's nothing to be ultra-concerned about. Because the the chance of you shutting down tomorrow and having to pay that liability out is remote. Fund balances for the county, which is really your operations without all of the extra stuff. They're fairly healthy as well. Your general fund has a un- unassigned fund balance of about eighty-six percent of your operating expenditures in that fund for last year. And so that's a pretty good position. We like to recommend that governments look at that and try to hit a benchmark of at least fifty percent. And so you're in pretty good position there. You did have two funds that had deficit fund balances, your water planning fund and your weed equipment reserve. I know Kevin is aware of that and looking at how to resolve those negative balances, deficit fund balances in those two funds. As Brad mentioned, there was a new standard that was implemented this year, and there is a footnote in Note twenty-one on page seventy-one of the PDF document, if you're looking at that. There was one small error correction. It was immaterial, but management chose to present that as a prior period, what was used to be called a prior period adjustment. Under the new standard, it's now called an error correction. And it was the result of a state grant that wasn't recognized as accounts receivable and revenues in the prior year. And so that was a small adjustment that was made about fifty thousand to your net position and your your fund balance as of the beginning of the year balances. There were no other significant changes this year. Last year, we had a whole bunch of changes. You had some reclassifications of funds and things. This year, the format of your financial statements, and with the exception of the new standard, there was really nothing new that was added. I think we would welcome any questions or comments at this point.
I mean, I I read through it and just, I I'm very happy to see that we got about as clean as you can get. So that's, that's great and good job. Yes.
Kathy, could you comment on, just for the, for the benefit of the Board? So last year, we had, I believe, at least one material weakness and multiple significant deficiencies that were noted. What does your process look like, you know, the following year when those are noted in a prior year and were those specific items specifically looked at and tested for this year?
Perfect. Sorry, I was muted. I can. So the items that we noted last year, the material weakness, I believe, was related to material adjustments that were required in the financial statements in order for those financial statements to be presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. We did not have those issues this year. Management has done a really good job of looking at all of their balances, getting all of those things reconciled and providing the information we need complete in order to be able to do the audit. And so that, that's a huge plus. And there were a few other items that were addressed. One of the things was your that we had put in the letter last year was the IT plan for recovery in the event of a disaster. And we understand that that is in the works. And so we did not repeat that finding because you guys are working to resolve that. If we come back next year and you haven't moved on it, or you come back in two years and it still hasn't been implemented, we may again at that point address it. So but Kevin and Tammy and Sabrina, everybody in finance is great to work with. We just wanted to thank them for their diligence.
My only question would be is, we had talked about a deficiency in our retirement fund. Couple years ago.
The unfunded liability.
Yeah, the unfunded liability. Now, is that, as far as monitoring, how we're coming on addressing that? That's an internal thing, right? I mean, that's not something that, the auditors just report to us. Is that correct? Does that make sense? What, I guess what I'm wanting to see is, are, you know, we would go to Kevin if we want to, okay, are we gaining on our unfunded, unfunded liability in that area? Because we did talk about it quite a bit. That, that would be something we would go to Kevin.
Is that right? Okay. And also Brad.
Thank you, sorry. The unfunded, your, your net pension liability that's there on the books. You're on a pay-as-you-go based on what your actuary has determined is the contributions that are required to be made during any given year. You're making those contributions as required. And so the rest of the numbers are, you know, as, like I said, as if everything was to shut down tomorrow, there would be an unfunded liability, but that the chance of that happening is remote. You are based on the actuary, up to date with the contributions that are required.
If it's necessary to make an adjustment on that, Kevin, to, you know, depending on how our investments are doing or whatever market conditions. That would be something we would talk about, correct?
They wouldn't be involved.
Correct. And, and just to, as a, as a little bit of reminder, when we, if you recall, we, we made some significant changes to the assumptions and how that valuation is calculated. We did that several months ago. And that, because it was a more, more realistic and less optimistic look at the future. That caused, it's part of the reason why some of that that liability increased. But yeah, we're, we're making the contributions as defined and recommended through that valuation. Plus, the last two years, we've made supplemental one million dollar contributions towards that unfunded liability. But the way that the pension liability is calculated, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's, that's really actually twelve months behind what are actual financials.
That is correct. Yeah, the measurement period is a year previous.
So we aren't seeing the effects of those supplemental contributions rolled into that valuation yet.
But yeah. So, and you have to understand how the, this amount is calculated. You know, the actuary does it. But you think about what they're doing is they're looking at, you know, as of June thirty-two thousand and twenty-three, that one year before. They are projecting out the future cash outflows to retirees. So that, you know, that's depending upon lots of estimates, you know, their longevity, how much they're going to be earning still as they are working. You know, a lot of things go into that estimate. So they project out all the future cash outflows for the system. And then they use a present value calculation to bring that back to what's the value of it today based upon a discount rate that is selected. And so, you know, you have a huge estimate there. And then that estimate is compared to the value of the assets held for the pension as of June thirty-twenty-three. And of course, the value of your assets can go up and down depending upon markets. And so it's kind of, you know, one of those things. It is a snapshot at that point in time. But you have this huge estimate of what the, that was future cash outflows are. You know, compared to, you know, this, this value that's going to fluctuate over time. So it's a big number, as Kathy said, but it's also one of those that, you know, making additional contributions do help in reducing the overall liability. But you still are going, always have that liability, you know, there's nobody, I've never suggested somebody to try and become one hundred percent funded. Because you're going to be putting a lot of money in this retirement system that basically then is outside your ability to, to access if needed. So it's just one of those things. We like to monitor it, make you aware of it. And of course, I always tell people, we're in a lot better in Oregon overall, whether you have your own plan or you're in Oregon Pers. We're a lot better positioned than a lot of other states are in terms of their retirement plans. You know, we're fairly well-funded in Oregon compared to many other states.
Okay, thank you. I answered my question. Anybody else have any other?
I think that's historically what the, what the Commission has done. I don't know that it's a requirement, but.
But your report is finished.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll move to accept the financial statements and audit report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Second?
The second and further discussion.
Thank you. Thanks for having Kathy.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move into our department reports. And the first one is our planning department monthly report from Tamara Mabbett.
Good morning. For the record, Tamara Mabbett, Chair. Commissioners, I'll be quick. I've got a lot of people waiting. You have a written report. I'll just highlight a couple of things and then answer questions. Have been monitoring the Oregon solar siting rule and the State Land Conservation Development Commission is expected to adopt those at the end of June. Not exactly sure which model they'll be adopting, but that will lead to some changes both at the local and the state level. I've involved in a couple of other advisory groups. I participate when I can. The Columbia River Heritage Trail, our survey wrapped up on May first, and I was trying to figure out what the final number was with the survey results we did with J U B Consulting, who's working on that plan update with us. On June tenth, we have a open house scheduled. This time it will be in Irrigan at the Farmer's Market from five-thirty to eight. Back in February, March, we had a similar open house held at the Sage Center. Clint Schumake, who's our planning tech, is really helping with all the logistics for that. And Clint and I are working on changing our code to implement new goals for farm and forest administrative rules. And I need to check with Matt to see if the Board wants to have a work session. We'll have a work session on those with the Planning Commission in June. Those are already being implemented. It's just a matter of adding them to our code. So those are found in one place. Steven, our GIS analyst, one of the projects he's been working on is to take all of the recorded public land surveys and create a survey explorer. survey explorer like some other online tools. Matt Kenny's very happy about that. It will mean that all those surveys are publicly accessible. They are now, but you have to go to three or four different locations to find them. So that's, there's thousands of surveys. That'll take him some time to do that. Our compliance planner's been busy. Eleven new code violations, eight code violations closed. That's always the number we like to see high. And then she's also working on several other applications. And highlights in terms of work with water. I'm have yet to be able to set aside other work to participate in the Department of Ag Rule Advisory Committee, but I've read those notes and there's another meeting coming up next week. Steven is about wrapped up with a story map of all the LubGuama issues, which has required some inter-agency coordination. In terms of the EPA grant, the drinking water roadmap, GSI sent out surveys and we have over 200 survey respondents. In my world, that's a big, that's by county. So that's not just more. It's a really good survey response. Last week, GSI and IRZ Consulting was out in the area. This time they were testing mostly wells in Yumitala County. They retested two in Morrow County because we had test results that didn't seem intuitively accurate. So they went back to retest those. Matt Jensen and I had a discussion with Courtney Warner-Croll from the Regional Solutions Team and our DLCD rep about the possibility of looking at a regional solve, problem-solving program that would allow us to implement some of those roadmap recommendations that might not otherwise neatly meet land use, DEQ, OWRD regulatory framework. However, some of those are also addressed in Senate Bill eleven fifty-four, which is a huge bill. It's also on your agenda today. Matt and I have been meeting weekly. We call it the Westland Technical Team. So that's the Meyer Engineering and also the REV program. So I'm coordinating closely with that because it's, again, another water effort that's underway. And Willamette Partnership to that end has submitted to us a draft report that looks non-engineering dive into what drinking water alternatives are there. So then the folks from REV can be meeting with that neighborhood and do help answer questions along with the preliminary engineering work. They're looking at the third week in June to do like a bigger, broader open house on that. Our interchange area management plan project at Tower Road. Staff has met with the technical team, looked at a deeper dive on different design options for that intersection, which would affect both ODOT and county. And then we have our technical advisory and public advisory committees scheduled for June seventeenth. And those are the highlights. Happy to answer the questions.
Thank you. She told us about your testimony before the natural resources.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, sure. That was fun. Matt asked, he said, you're probably the LubGuama go-to person in the county.
Just for the public, could you kind of go through where you went, what you did?
You bet. Thank you for asking. Happy to do that. I got some press coverage with Dan Dorn. Who knew? So the Senate Committee on Natural Resources and Wildfire had a special work session and said, we've heard a lot about this LubGuama. What's it about? So they invited a panel of state agencies, the four OHAD, EQ, OWRD, and what am I missing? OHAD, anyway. And then somebody from the governor's office. So Jeff Huntington's the chief of staff for natural resources. And they presented really more the policy work the state agencies have been reviewing. And then there were two local panels. So I was on with Dan Dorn and Karen Lewowski from the Environmental Council to give the local perspective. My message to them, of course, the intent was to keep it very positive, but also objective. And to say that at the local level, we have a lot of initiatives to really find solutions for the drinking water. Mentioned the Clean Water Coalition, mentioned the roadmap project, those boots-on-the-ground projects that should be moving the dial at least at short-term immediate concern for drinking water. Those are all happening at the local level. The long-term policy cleanup of the Aquifer. That's the governor's office and the state agencies, and that's a lot more slowly moving for obvious reasons. You're not going to clean up an Aquifer in a couple of years. So got really good reception, particularly from the local congregation. They thought that counties were taking some initiative.
That's a comment I'd like to make. I watched it. It seemed like we had a good group there from the county, not just county government. You know, we had Joe Taylor, Aaron Jerk, and
Yeah.
You know, and Justin from Stroh, you know.
That's right. Yeah, they were on the panel, at the other panel. That's right.
Like a real positive, you know, idea-oriented presentation from all of them.
Yeah, I think, I think it featured Morrow County well. We're actually doing things. Didn't emphasize the fact that regulating water is completely outside of a county jurisdiction. But we're solving the problem with the legacy issue, right? So people do need to remember that it is, it's not a county's obligation, but given the situation, if the county wasn't taking initiative, doing something, I don't know who would be, right? So.
Could be our obligation to remind them that we have this issue. You know.
Yeah. And I think, I think they're getting that, but that in a five-minute didn't seem the time and place, especially coming from a staff person. But I do hope that they continue to look at it. And gosh, if I had a few weeks' time to carve out, I might just do a research paper that gives the full history and why we are and why this conundrum is the way it is. It's one thing to designate a critical groundwater area, and then what? And that's really where we are in a pretty, you know, serious way. So thanks for asking for that.
No. Before, anybody else have any questions to Tamara before she?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Sheriff's Office of Report. Brian here? There he is.
Morning, the sheriffs.
Morning.
Good morning.
Brian Snyder under sheriff. Mine will be quick. Things are going well at the sheriff's office. Things are moving along with the hiring process. We are in the backgrounds with one right now. And if he passes, we'll be fully staffed in patrol, which will be outstanding since it's been a couple of years. We have four in training, two are there in their final stages of their field training, and two at the academy. And if we hire this one, does make the background, then he'll be going to the academy as well. The other divisions are setting good. They're fully staffed other than dispatch, but we are down to, well, we have three, officially, we have three openings, but we're in background for, with one, and she's a lateral. So with, we believe that she'll be, you know, go through the background just fine. So we'll only have two openings left in dispatch. Programs are running, up and running and doing well. And we're just finishing up our last week of annual trainings. So it's busy, but everything's moving smoothly.
As far as the state goes, does getting to a point where you're fully staffed compared to, you know, like say, you know, the majority of counties in Oregon, is that significant in comparison?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would, I would believe that we're going to be a rarity. And, you know, and fully staffed is not guaranteed for a long period of time. But it would be nice to be fully staffed and at least enjoy what it's like.
Moment that it happens.
For a moment, yes.
Yeah.
It's, most agencies, I think overall, the majority of all agencies across the state are, are shorthanded.
Any other questions to Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Sykes. Yes, Corey Sweeney, Morrow County Program Manager, Weed Program Manager. And this is my quarterly report. So starting in the March, March was probably my busiest month to date. I met with several individuals interested in future employment as the whole pine pesticide applicator for the county. I had a meeting with Cook County Weed Master on a pilot program with their energy in, in that county. I had a meeting with Haley and Aldrich regarding energy facilities in the county. I met with greater operators regarding spring blading program and roadside spraying. I met with a Portimore employee about weeds at the mill site. I met with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife about Rejuva test plots in the county. I met, I had several meetings with Director Irons regarding balloting workloads. Service the main spray truck, twenty-three one sixty-five. I met with a landowner regarding B2H, discussing startup and the mapping for weed control. I met with a landowner regarding energy facility and weed issues. I worked on spray truck, twenty-three one sixty-five involving two different separate breakdowns. Also worked on the spray truck, total twelve forty-nine on the spray sync software programming for the mapping to get the spray lines corrected. I did a deep clean on two thirteen Lindenway weed facility building. Received spring chemical application for bare ground spraying for an energy project. I reviewed that application. I was able to get caught up on discharge and proper waste disposals of rinse aid and containment vessels. I attended the overall public state, public works quarterly meeting. I completed CIS training courses online. I met with landowner pertaining with cereal rye issues. I did contract spraying for the city of Hepner. And I sprayed two hundred and ninety-five miles of roadside for the county in March. So it was a very busy month for spraying and meetings and and equipment issues because I was running so hard. So that was, that was kicking off my orders there. Any questions on any of those? Let's bring them on. April, sent truck twenty-three one sixty-five to Pasco for recall issue. I attended the inaugural Northwest Range Land Summit in La Grande. Investigated a noxious weed infestation at the Hamilton Ranch. I attended a Wheat Ridge quarterly meeting with Nextera Buttercrack Spraying and Haley and Aldrich Consulting. I made a chemical run to Walla Walla. I met, I met with Soil and Water Conservation Districts on several weed issues. I intended a manager's leadership workshop at the Gillman Bisbee Building. I continued working on the OWEG grant and secured second quarter payments. I investigated the Myrtle Spurge outbreak surrounding Hepner. Fixed the breakdown on UTV two fifty, sprayed for the Lexington Airport. I did contract spraying for the US Army Corps of Engineers. And in April, I sprayed three hundred and thirty-nine miles of roadside from the county. Moving into May, I worked on the OWEG grant report and filed for an extension. I sprayed out a synchofoil infestation in Spritzmeier Meadow and Alder Creek. I've received more than numerous calls on weed identifications and concerns this month. Quite a few, actually, more than usual, probably. I fixed the breakdown on UTV two fifty sprayer, coordinated drone spraying for landowners inundated with Myrtle Spurge. I invested gated white top infestation on Buttercrack. I coordinated a Rejuva test plot tour throughout the county involving Oregon Department of Agriculture, Engle Company, ODOT, and that weed Soil and Water Conservation District, and the NRCS. I sprayed a hundred and five miles of county thus far. And and yeah, probably the big thing this month was was, I don't know if you saw on the packet, it's this Myrtle Spurge, this weed.
Yeah, it's a great picture to put in there. Thank you.
Yeah. I know, it's a little scary. That's actually a Ken Hepner. And it's been several issues with burns and whatnot. And I, Kevin Payne is here with.
Say that picture, that's my fault.
Yeah.
I created that documentary.
This is a true story. This is what happens when you, and it's, it's, there was a lady in Union near Cove who had someone in her yard and she pulled it and got the sap in her eye and it blinded her in the eye for life. It's, it's a really nasty weed. So coordinated. Yeah, yeah. Well, we got drone spraying around the city of Hepner. Yeah, and I think there were seven different landowners and they all paid for the drone spraying and got it taken care of so it doesn't inundate into Hepner because it is dangerous for kids and animals. We don't want it. It's a very attractive weed. It's almost an exotic, but it, but it is very invasive and very, so that, that was busy. And then also, today is the Free Spray Day in Irrigan. So it's, sign up if you, you know, to combat those noxious weeds around here. That's at the city, the.
City Park, yeah, nine to noon.
Nine to noon. And then also, since this report, well, since this middle of this agenda, I've been working with the goats. Got the goats secured here in Irrigan for three and a half mile fire break against the houses on Montana. Where in between the river and south there. So that's kind of my quarterly report. Lots of spraying. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah.
We got a new application for FSEC, Sunrise Solar. You know about that?
Yeah. I'm sorry, did you say Sunrise or Sun?
Isn't that the one Northville?
Yes.
My question is, I guess, you know, I go down on FSEC's list exhibits, you know.
Yes.
Seeing what they're. Can you tell me, I should have probably asked you this a long time ago, because you know the solar projects. Do you, are you ever asked for input or do you give input to any of these things on FSEC? Or does any of our staff in the county talk about weeds or process?
A lot with, with F, yes, a lot of questions with FSEC and, and they reach out to me and they, they look for guidance and what the county wants on certain stuff. And they have Haley and Aldrich as their consulting. And now that's, since it's gotten so big in the last three years, that's exclusively almost who I deal with now is Haley and Aldrich. But we do. And then also, they reach out to me usually before the permitting process and ask about what am I looking at? What's, you know, what's, what would be a good avenue? What, you know, wanted to touch base with you? They, somehow they're told, I don't know how, but like you should check in with the lead coordinator. And that's happened several times before. The site script, I always recommend on these bigger ones that they should use goats or sheep, probably sheep grazing and, and figure out a way to get water out there. But that's the input I have. And yeah, with FSEC, they do, we do talk quite a bit. And actually about the issues that arise that we're trying to combat now to prevent that from other, you know, problem areas when these bigger and larger solar projects come in.
Right. That was my other question. Do they have any other questions, Corey?
So I think it was on your last report, you know, you mentioned that you met with the Department of Energy people or somebody.
Yes.
So are they looking at, take responsibility since it is their permit and they're the ones that are in charge of this of holding the developers responsible to?
So they are, they're taking somewhat responsibility. They have hired thinking that that would take care of it, you know, more people, more personnel with the road. The trouble is the documenting, the recording, the eyes on, okay, you're, you're not doing this. This is not happening. This is not being met. And so it kind of goes to a point where it's, it becomes an issue, you know, and then we're trying to do corrective action. So if we can get on it or they can get on it at the time of implementation to start these, to stop these issues or prevent them. And they're, I don't know if they're having a hard time figuring it out, or they're, they're just having a hard time getting out here. They need somebody out here full-time, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean,
Yeah.
My point is that they're the ones that hold the permit or, you know, issue the permit, have the authority. They're the ones that can allow the project to continue or to shut it down. Let me find, you know, I mean, they have the hammer.
Yes.
They're the ones issuing the permit. It's just, I think that they should be the ones enforcing that instead of the burden falling off
Yes.
citizens' mark, you know.
Yes, yes. So they do recognize that, but they also state the fact that, well, we just don't have somebody out there all the time. We don't, they, I, and I don't know. I don't know. I, I've conveyed that multiple times and. I don't know. I, I've, I've conveyed that multiple times and we're getting there. But they, they keep saying it's a learning curve. We haven't seen this, this much. Infested this much going in. This is, we're all learning, you know, and trying to figure this out. So it's a slow process, but we're getting there and, um. Yeah, so that's my best answer for you at this moment.
That's great that you keep relaying that. It's up to them that they need.
It's up to them. Yes, yeah.
Step up and do their responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I would say the energy companies themselves have done a really good job of trying to do that, whatever it takes. You know, it's just they're learning too, you know, and stuff. So it's been, yeah, it's just been a slow process, I should say, for figuring that out. Yeah.
Yeah, this was important. Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you.
That was our Veteran Services, uh, quarter report.
Good morning, Amanda Kendrick with Veteran Services. In your packet, you should have my quarterly report that I submit to the Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs. Just kind of an overview of January, February and March, some numbers to go through. Pretty happy with the numbers of interviews, eighty-one for the month of in-office interviews. A number I do want to point out, which is, you know, a little disappointing at the moment, um, total amounts for the quarter is zero. Pointing that out of, I'm very happy to say that now I am finally starting to receive, um, the way that it works, people come to the office, we fill out the forms and then it's got to go through the whole federal government. So I am nine months in and I am just now starting to see over the last few weeks, stuff that I have been working on, starting to come back. So that number will start to go up, which will be great. Um, won't go through everything since I'm sure you guys already reviewed it. But it just shows you everything, um, that I've been going to, meetings, trainings. I'm happy to report that the Irrigan coffee time that we do here weekly is going really well. We usually have over, over twenty, um, even sometimes up to thirty, which has been great, um, every week. We did have to cancel it this week as both Diana and I were in a conference, um, down in Coos Bay this weekend. First time we got to go to an in-person conference, which was great for both of us to be able to just actually go and make connections. In person and finally be able to put faces to names. And that was really good for me, um, because there's been a lot of turnover in the Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs lately. Um, nine months in, I am on my fourth trainer. So it's, it's been difficult. So, um, making those connections locally has been really good for me. That I can go and, you know, lean on them and ask them questions as well. And they've all been, um, super supportive and amazing. So that was a really good event, um, to go to for us. Um, and, but I heard back from my veterans that they were very sad that they even had to miss one week of it.
Well, that's good.
It is very good. Um, it is great. And in Hepner, we're doing the once a month lunches, which has also been great. We have over thirty veterans attending that as well. Um, in your packet, I did include the Boardman, the one that we're doing quarterly. Um, advertising for that as well, plus an article that was written about us in the North Morrow Times. Um, and our next one in Boardman is actually next Wednesday. So I will be out there next Wednesday in the evening, just trying to hit, um, like here in Irrigan, we do morning. Evening, we do Hepner, um, the lunchtime and then six to seven, I'm doing Boardman. So if anyone can't make morning, you know, working, just trying to hit all the different time slots. So people don't have excuses not to show up. Um, so that is my goal, just to get the word out there. And more recently, if you want to hear my lovely voice, you can hear me on the radio. One oh three point five and ninety-two point one, we are doing advertisements on there. Which I have actually got some phone calls from saying, I did not know we had an office in Irrigan. And one of the veterans actually even lived here in Irrigan himself. So that's quite shocking to me that that still happens. Um, and I, we do advertise in the Gazette as well, but I was not able to get my hands on a physical copy to get that in yours as well. But our Memorial Day ad will be going out in that as well. So we try to advertise in both of those monthly. And we did start our social media page this month. So you can find us on Facebook. Just trying to reach a new demographic, getting our events out there. Just trying to promote as much as possible because that is how our grant is also based, is by how many veterans actually come into our office. And sign for us to represent them. So whether they live here or not, does not necessarily matter. They have to actually come into the office and sign over representation. Is how we get funded. Any questions?
Sure, this may not be a question that, that can be answered, but you know, how do you feel like a percentage of the veterans of Morrow County? How many do you like roughly think are, are signing up and being involved?
Um, I mean, I, my guess, estimate would probably say a third.
Okay.
That would just be my, my rough estimate because I think we have a little less than a thousand. And I definitely believe we have a lot more than that. Um, so that is my, one of my main goals is getting that outreach out there. Because in the nine months that I've been here, I cannot even count how many between sixty, seventy, eighty-year-old veterans. I've had that come in and say they've never filed for anything in their life. And it's mind blowing. Um, so getting the word out there of why have you never, you know, just trying to figure out why and breaking that down. Has been my main objective at the moment. Um, and seems to be working for the most part. And there's more to do, but there's always going to be more to do.
Sure, if I could just make a, uh, point, shout out and kudos. Uh, during county college, we had a presentation, um, not this month, but during April. And the, uh, the statewide Veteran Service Officers Association, um, president. Uh, I asked how Amanda was doing. He'd like, she is just awesome. She's being proactive. She's exactly what your county needs. And so just want to recognize a, a shout out from the state association on, on what Amanda's doing to step up and really reach out to our veterans. And educate herself on opportunities and capabilities.
That's great. Yeah, that's awesome.
Keep it up.
Yes, um, any other?
Any other questions?
No question. Just comment. I think it's great that you're going out and meeting the people where they are instead of finding them, them to use. So I think that's probably the positive, I think, more content. So that's great.
Yes, trying my best. So I'll, I'll go anywhere. Senior centers, um, home visits, we'll, we'll do it all.
Farmer fields.
Hey, as long as there's wifi so I can fill out, but you know what? That's not even true. I'll bring paper forms and pen. We'll go with the old fashioned way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, next up would be, uh, Justice Court Report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Everybody, I'm Glenn Deal, the Justice Peace. Um, just had a few highlights here. I'd already spent it part of the report. I would point out that as, one of the things we're seeing as particularly Circuit Court is getting busy and everything else. That's impacting the Justice Court that much more. Um, we're continuing to have lots of conflicts with the use of the courtroom, use of the judges' chambers. Um, yesterday they had a jury trial on, bunnies and tuesdays are generally considered the Justice Court days. But we share everything with Circuit Court and the DA's office. Um, I had to cancel court and had people showing up that were cited to appear that could not appear. Because Circuit Court was using it. So my plug on that is let's hurry up and get a new building. So. Um, working. Um, unfortunately, to my surprise, we're continuing to see more, um, hundred-plus mile an hour violations coming in. Um, I'm getting a couple, two or three a, a month now. Um, we were seeing it kind of go down and now we're seeing it kind of come up. Some of that I think is going to be expected as we're coming into better weather, if we're going to go out and do things. But, um, and I would also attribute that as well as the increase in citations by our greater law enforcement presence that we have right now. The sheriff's office is getting more up to the full staff, um, the PDs are. And we're seeing a little bit more proactive with state police. So hopefully, what I hope is going to happen is we're going to see the numbers increase and then we're going to see compliance. So that should bring the numbers to decrease as they start gaining compliance throughout our region. Um, I, one of the things brand new here, and I just bring that up, that we're about to go through a C, CJIS. CJIS, that's the, um, Criminal Justice Information Systems Audit here at the first of the month. And while filling out the questionnaires and everything else, one of the things that was a surprise to me is you're required, anybody that goes back here to the secure area. Is required to be CJIS certified. Um, and that is now an annual thing. So people that are back in here, and I bring that up because we're having more, Matt's been spending more time there, Kevin's been spending more time there. They all have to be CJIS, IS, um, certified to be back in that area. So something, it's not a big thing. You got to go online. You got to take a test and says that you're not going to share information. And, but the initial part, you still have to go through fingerprinting to make sure that you don't have a criminal background and everything. And I expect that to come up during this audit. Um, another thing that I wanted to bring up is, and I put on my note that Robin Jones will be retiring. Uh, the first week in September, and I reached out with Matt, sent him a couple emails about, um, let's get somebody, get it advertised. Let's get it, somebody hired so that we can take the advantage and train while we still have our staffing. So that this new person can hit the ground running, which will reduce the impact on both the court, but more importantly, the public.
Just to add on that, she's been here, uh, she'll be celebrating her ten-year anniversary. So we'll make sure we recognize that as before she goes. So giving a good dead gig to the county.
Any questions? Thank you.
Do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, I didn't get it submitted. Yeah, I'll be submitting it at the next.
Okay.
That one's written.
Mostly always. She'll, sometimes she comes online, she has something extra to add. She's got anything she wants to kick in?
No.
Next up, we have Matt's County Administrator Report.
Yeah, um, submitted written report of several of the different activities that we're, uh, that I've been going through and taking over. Here over the last two weeks, uh, was down in Salem for, uh, testimony, uh, for a capital construction. Uh, funding request. Um, thought that went well after the testimony in the ninth kind of got rescheduled because there were so many people. Um, it is a bit of a long shot. Two million dollars worth requests, only five hundred million dollars of available funds. Uh, but I think the nature of our request and some support from our local representative. Um, I, I, I'm feeling positive about it. I know I shouldn't be. It's kind of winning the lottery to use lottery funds. But, um, it did seem like it was well received by the committee and, uh, we'll be following up on that. Um, a lot of work, uh, Kevin's been shouldering the load on the, the budget and just trying to assist him on, on details there. I was able to meet with the, uh, the Health District Director, Dennis Burke, um, had a really good discussion with him. And, um, I believe with the, uh, if the elections, uh, stay true. We likely should have a shared joint, uh, meeting with them to, uh, with the new board, just to have discussions on strategies and such. That is one entity that wasn't involved in the strategic plan, um, uh, discussions that we had in, um, in May. And so we'd like to engage with them a little bit, just to get their, their viewpoints on that. Um, do you want to put up, um, on public record that we do have the Budget Committee meetings tomorrow, uh, twenty-second, twenty-third? Um, and we do have strategic plan town halls, uh, round two, uh, June tenth in Boardman and June eleventh in Hepner. And we'll be getting a, uh, a flyer sent out for the survey that this next week for people to, to know about those and hopefully engage there. So, um, any questions from the Commission on the Written Report or anything that mentioned? Um, one, one thing, we will be in June, uh, we've been going through a bunch of the design issues on, uh, Circuit Court as we finalize that. We should really have a set layout and plan, uh, that will be presented, I believe, at the June eighteenth meeting. And so we'll be bringing that to you, just so you see that before we, uh, go to all the final details on that. We want you to understand what we're, what we're taking to Pasco.
You know, I, I have a lot of people asking me what is, you know, when it's going to go and all that stuff. Are we planning any? Town hall, not town hall, but just a place where we can play, you know, give a timeline.
We, we haven't really engaged in that, but I was planning to have something, uh, at the fair. And we could create something on the website about the Circuit Court and start putting information there so they're aware of that. And, uh, unless the B O C would like us to do a town hall presentation, a informational meeting, we could, we could arrange that. That's not currently planned, but we've been working towards that.
What if you think if we, uh, then we went to a city council meeting?
And sure.
Have a lot of data, kind of invited the public, uh, where he's going to put off information. If you think of that idea, it's, I mean, I, I've been hearing people, not a day, if they just kind of wonder what, you know, where is it at?
Be happy to coordinate that. Uh, I could reach out to John and see if we could do that some, uh, in their, uh, July meeting after we have the B O C finalize things. And, um, uh, we bring, we bring it up to him, let him know what's, what's coming. Yeah.
Any other questions on that? Okay, that's the consent agenda. Does either of the commissioners want to pull any of those two items out?
I think he was already pulled out. We eliminated it. So it's just.
It was canceled.
Yeah, canceled, not pulled out.
So we have one left in there, approval commercial loan payment for M C G, the building Kevin. Well, this is a consent agenda. So, uh, if everybody's good with it, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Move to second and include the discussion, all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Next up would be our.
Chair, can I ask for a brief recess?
Yeah, um, okay. Five-minute recess. All the media and all kind of position back to the boardroom from our recess. So we're, you know, from seven A, so we've got officer contract.
Um, so what, what we have before the Board of Commissions today is a contract, uh, uh, to make the Public Health Officer a contracted employee. Uh, this, uh, is a little bit of different change. Before it was a contractor and this is a little bit of legalese on, on this situation. As a contracted employee, uh, the position would enjoy free, uh, full coverage through CIS of, uh, for insurance coverage and, and errors, missions, all those types of things. Um, um, as a contracted employees, instead of having a, a, a seven hundred fifty-dollar stipend. We would have to, uh, bill them hourly. The reason why we're looking to change this is for the increased state insurance and, uh, the fact that our Public Health Officer, Dr. Emily Jack. Is also serving as our Family Planning Services, uh, Contractor Employee. And, uh, there's IRS and bully issues where if we have a contractor and a contracted employee, that creates, uh, uh, complications. And so, uh, a month ago, we entered into a contract with Dr. Emily Jack to make her a contracted employee. This is following up to. This is following up to their, look, the language for public health official and, um, make that a contracted employee as well. We've checked with, uh, Dr. Jack, she's, uh, in acceptance of this, uh, change of, of contractual relationship. And we'd asked the VOC for approval to, uh, to, uh, to go into this and change the public health officer from a contractor to a contracted employee position. And so with that, we'd ask for your, uh, a motion to authorize the contract and have the VOC sign.
I move to approve the contract with Dr. Emily Jack for public health officer as a contracted employee.
Second.
Second and further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next up, some D request to modify funding motion for lower Willow Creek groundwater recharge projects and that.
Yes, um, we have, uh, Kevin Payne and Kip Krip here, if they'd like to come up to speaker, um, as for any questions. Um, back in September twenty twenty four, uh, these two individuals appeared for it before us on behalf of the Lower Willow Creek Groundwater Recharge Project. Um, and with the presentation to request thirty nine thousand dollars towards feasibility study on the project. Um, the board approved twenty thousand dollars with the condition that landowners match nineteen thousand dollars. Um, as they, uh, pulled together the funding and submitted an invoice, um, it was shown that the, the remaining nineteen thousand dollars, uh, was coming from the Port Moro. And so it didn't match the resolution that, uh, the VOC, uh, had passed. As such, we have not paid that, uh, twenty thousand dollars room, uh, amount. And, um, Kip and Kevin believe that there's, uh, extenuating situ- uh, circumstances and they'd like the VOC to reconsider. And that they anticipate landowners match will come later in the project, but there's, um, some, some issues that they're, they would like, um, the VOC to consider and hopefully, um, alter their approval on the twenty thousand dollars amount, so they can go through with the, uh, with the other funding that's there for the, uh, feasibility study. And, uh, with the anticipation that the larger project, the property owners will, uh, make contributions to it. With that, I turn it over to Kip and Kevin for any questions or any comments that you have, and open it up for the VOC to ask any questions as, as needed.
Okay, you guys have, uh, anything you wanna contribute here?
That summed it up quite well, um, we had initial meetings planned after the meeting we had in September for funding asks. And it just worked out that Port Moro wanted to cover the remaining balance. And, uh, now, landowners all do know they're gonna be chipping in here, hopefully this progresses on to phase two and so it's on their radar. Farmers and ranchers, want you to seek funding from other entities first and then over to them.
Uh, Mr. Krips, how much water are we talking about? Could you remind me?
Since you're near the board, yes, um, the total amount available to the Morro County and Gilmore County, um, water right holders from Confluence Ray Creek to the Columbia is five thousand six hundred and forty acre feet. Uh, break that down to gallon form, that is one billion, one point eight three seven billion gallons of water.
How many acres would this?
It encompasses, um, sixteen hundred ninety-two irrigated acres in Morro County and four hundred eighty acres in Gilmore County.
That's, that's over two acre feet water per acre, that's a big deal.
And just reminder, this is water that's already allocated to this area. We're not asking, you know, use the money, go find water, we already got the water, we're just trying to find the best way to use it that is feasible for landowners.
Any other questions of either of Kevin or?
As far as, uh, my thoughts go, I, I appreciate, uh, you know, going out and finding the money however you could find it. And I think that, uh, you deserve points for that, is my opinion. I will, uh, make a motion to rescind the funding motion made on September fourth, twenty twenty four with regards to the Willow Creek Groundwater Recharge Project.
Okay, I'll second that. So, most to rescind the funding, which we made on September fourth, twenty twenty four, any further discussion?
Well, I think I will just reiterate what I said before, you know, I see this as, you know, benefiting someone's business, how someone's gonna generate revenue. And I just have a hard time with the county taxpayers subsidizing someone's business a hundred percent. That's, you know, when you came the first time, I said I can see where there could be some community benefit, and that's why I was willing to fund half of it with the contingency that the landlords have some skin in the game, because everyone's going to financially benefit from this. And so I have a hard time justifying to the other citizens of the county why they are subsidizing someone's business. I stand on it.
Any other comments or discussion?
I, uh, think it's an awesome opportunity for, uh, I mean, this would change how farming could be done along here, and that's something that would, you know, potentially, if it worked out, affect taxes. Like, th- this is a, a huge potential in terms of how this would change what could be done around Willow Creek. Because this is more than just a community thing, this could be, if it plays out right, a, a big win for everybody involved, so that's, that's my comment.
Okay, further comments? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried, uh, our second motion would be to fund the lower, we, uh, water recharge project amount of twenty thousand. Rescind our original.
I move to fund the lower Willow Creek groundwater recharge project in the amount of twenty thousand.
My second. Who moved a second, any further discussion? Uh, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Federation of Ex, incident, CDA property into the one entire rescue district.
So can I ask Justin a question? So yesterday you sent out an email to us about mitigation about this issue. Would it be appropriate to discuss that in executive session and then address this issue after we talk about an executive session?
Honestly, the only concern, this, I think we talked about this now, but normally, yes, could I, often on an executive session discussion, yes. My concern, a little bit when I saw the, um, the agenda, we had it, I was thinking, I looked at the executive sessions, I remember we were having one already kind of for potential, um, litigation aspect of that statute, but then we had a subsection that listed specifically the one we were doing, and I was like, uh, that's harder to, you know, fit in if it was a broad base, I was like, okay, we can fit a couple in. But it's listed with the one only on there, that's where I was like, oh, we can't easily fit that in, that's a concern that I have on this. I believe this is primarily more of a background, um, that we're coming out, we're setting a date, I think there'll still be things that happen. I mean, you are correct that, um, and it's fair, it's now in the court system, there was a, um, a, a judgment for statutory relief injunction filed by hearing of fire against the Public Development Authority, Board of Moro and, uh, Moro County and uh, there's four parties involved at least. Not you, you too, yeah, there we go. Four, and that was, um, I knew about this filed yesterday afternoon, and then I saw it was accepted by the court this morning, um, at eight forty. So that does have a case number now and been accepted in. So there may be things that occur between now and when this hearing is set. So I guess I'm fine with this, doing an initial discuss, discussion on this, not discussion in detail of the process, but really as, uh, Administrator Jensen's put in the packet, it's pretty clear of just saying, this is the process where fires can go through, the annexation process, these have timelines set. We wanna set, you know, go forward saying that timelines or what date, and then between that time, there may be some court action or decisions where we say, even the court decides, no, we're gonna stop that. Or have a court decision first before we go forward with, decide on either one of these. So that's kind of the background, I think, really, Administrator Jensen, I think that's correct, and we were just gonna talk a little bit more brief overview. This is definitely not the hearing date, I mean, that was one thing too, when I first saw this on the agenda, I was like, I even asked Matt, I was like, hold on, oh, there's twenty days, hold on. And then he's like, no, no, Justin, we're just, this is this initial discussion, I'm like, oh, okay, okay, we're fine then. Um, though those timeline issues can't be sooner than twenty days, earlier than fifty under this process for annexation, so. I think we're okay going forward, just kinda do that brief, talking about setting a date, and then things may change in between.
Yep. That was, that was the intent of, uh, this, uh, this item that we have on, on the agenda today. Uh, we have received from what we, uh, have record of, a fully legal and conforming, um, annexation request by the CDA, um, to annex into the Boardman Fire, uh, Rescue District. This is according to ORS one ninety eight point eight five seven, which encompasses annexation by special districts, which, uh, Boardman Fire is part of. And so as we receive a annex, uh, annexation application, that triggers certain requirements by ORS where we need to schedule a public hearing. And we have to have that public hearing, uh, no sooner than twenty days, no later than fifty days from receipt of that application. Um, acknowledging the fact that there might be, uh, a legal challenge, uh, based on a separate ORS, uh, which appears to be conflicting ways, and we can discuss that at a later time if, if necessary. Um, I, I believe that we are required legally to set that public hearing. And then any kind of injunctions or other court actions that might take place to, um, to impact that hearing can, can take place as, as necessary. Uh, but as right now, it's, uh, my belief and my holding that legally, we're required to set a public hearing, and that's what the request is today, just to set the public hearing for consideration of the annexation application.
Probably, I'm just a little housekeeping, can I ask you to hit the participation gap there, so we know who will be on the list on line?
Okay, so, um.
I mean, I, I know this shows a bunch on across the top, but down at the bottom, you.
Oh, the participants list, the little thing on the bottom.
Yeah, and, uh, oh, this one? So, um, we have, uh.
I thought we had one where it showed them all our little squares.
Yeah, we can actually change the view.
The view part.
I don't know, you guys, I kinda like that one better.
Right there.
Yeah, that one there.
And so, um, so as we look at this, um, again, no determination, uh, is being made. This is to allow public comment and before the VOC considers, uh, accepting the annexation.
Okay, any questions on that?
Could we set it for, uh, our Wednesday meeting in June in Irrigan? That put it right in the middle between.
Uh, June fourth and.
June, uh, for the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yes, you could, and we could set a, uh, whether we wanna do public hearing during this meeting or have a separate public hearing in the afternoon, um, your choice.
I think it would be better to have it as a separate one.
Yes, also that would allow more time if they wanna be especially, I know we have normally Wednesdays, but that kinda might free up other days too, if we're setting it as a separate date anyways. I'm not a separate date, but a separate time or the afternoon is a special hearing, we might not be limited on that, just that one day that we are here. Or maybe we should do a different location, even of, you know, Boardman or Irrigan, that could be an option too.
Okay, so it seems to be, do you have preference?
No, I guess, I mean, on the one hand, I'd say it's for sooner, you know, June fourth and.
We will be, um, anticipating a work session on June fourth for two different, uh, items. Um, but we could set it for later that afternoon or even early evening, if you, if you'd like. And June eighteenth is probably good to avoid because Chair Sykes is out, unless he's trying to sidestep.
Well, I could, I was thinking, I could probably zoom in.
Okay.
I, I can probably zoom in.
You're gonna be gone on the eighteenth day?
No, I think I may, I think I may, well, no, I am gonna be gone, I'm going to be gone, because I'm gonna be in transit to a family meeting.
About June eleventh.
I'll be here June eleventh.
It's an open Wednesday.
We wanna do it in, what time of day do we wanna do it?
Nine AM.
That's what we do.
The, yeah, the only conflict for the eleventh for me is we currently have two, I think there's deals about four sort of court trials set, I can never guarantee neither of them are gonna go. I do just show that I have two set, I'd go for the tenth and the eleventh, so Tuesday, Wednesday date. And so that's the only concern that my availability for here, um, because there are those two trial dates set. I'll know more later on, probably one of those, if those are gonna go or not, but at least currently, that's on my agenda. I also show that Justice Court, they have cases like corpse, that's on to the afternoon, so they're fine. That's the only issue with the eleven, or just for me, that's just.
But you would be able to make the morning work?
No, 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 sadly no, uh, because Justice Court is separate at, it leads to a whole other issue of mine, like I have two circuit court trials set right now, but those, of course, most people know trials can go away. Which is gonna lead me to probably have to continue all of our Justice Court cases, those are still set, because they're set for the afternoon of the eleventh, which has that conflict with Circuit Court. So, um, at least currently right now, I can't say I'd be available on the eleventh just because of that trial settings. Just like today, I wasn't sure if I was gonna be here, but luckily that got, it was done, so I was able to, it could be the same for those. I would say there's a good chance, like eighty, ninety percent chance the trials go away, and honestly, I, that's the timing of it, but I never know for sure.
Let's do June eleventh at nine AM then.
That's what we.
Okay, um, location?
I think here. That'd be most convenient for the two parties that are really gonna be showing up.
Yes.
Okay, we will, um, work to get the appropriate notice out and get that set up. And who knows, if the Circuit Court moves that fast, that our planning may be, you know.
Yes, we'll do what we're supposed to.
Correct. Um, just to, just to make sure we don't trip over any things, can I, uh, ask for a motion?
Yes.
Send that public hearing, and the motion should be for June eleventh at nine AM in Irrigan.
We'll make the motion that we hold the hearing on the annexation of the CDA property from the Fire Department on June eleventh at nine AM, Irrigan, in this building.
I second that.
Move to second and further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
One, one side note on this, um, uh, we will likely, uh, anticipate another application coming in for, uh, for other CDA properties that will be, that's, um, the CDA is asking to be annexed into the Irrigan Fire Department as well. So hopefully we'll get that down.
Uh, next up is, uh, we're just waiting about the, it's House Bill two one six five relating to rural water supplies. Who, who's, uh, who's good at those?
I had a camera on that. And what she's, uh, well, she's been following this bill, uh, HB twenty one sixty five, and in dealing with the rural water, uh, supplies. Um, she believes, and she's here, come on up.
Morning, sorry for the delay. Twenty one sixty five?
Yes.
Thank you. Like so many bills, this one passed through the House and is now at the, um, Joint, um, Ways and Means Committee, so in front of you today, I put a revised paper copy of that letter for your consideration. The staff recommendation is to submit a letter to support this, I think it'd be very, um, beneficial, uh, particularly, uh, for properties that are in the Love Guam. The bill instructs Oregon State University to create a program to provide outreach and education to households that rely on wells for drinking water. It includes funding for that, that used to be a thing, um, many years ago, OSU had a home assist and a farm assist, so. So, F A R M dash A dash S Y S T, um, that um, taught particularly the rural homeowners, things that might be common sense in a, in an area, and may not be, things like, don't store your pesticides and chemicals in your pump house, those sorts of things. Um, and it also creates uh, funding for the Water Resources Department to have a water well abandonment repair and replacement fund. Um, that could be directly beneficial for some of the households in our area, that might not be candidates to connect to a municipal clean drinking water system. And then also allocates money to Oregon Department of Environmental Quality for a, a low interest loan program to replace septic systems, because we do know that septic systems, particularly poorly functioning, um, have an effect on groundwater, so. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, I think this, this is one of those ones, it's pretty straightforward, it would help people where we're at, so, be great. No, I agree with that, but I think that we need to put this on a different letterhead.
What's the letterhead?
Oh, oh, it, this, this one. Roy on this one.
And you've sent that to me, right, so I can get it fixed.
Our apologies.
Sorry, I don't know who put it on letterhead, one of us, anyway, we'll get that corrected.
We'll get that fixed.
I read everything else, and I thought.
So, uh, my apologies, some of us have gotten an old letterhead on that, we did that fixed, and delete those other ones.
So, we need a motion to find that letter in support of HB twenty one sixty eight, so I make the motion that we sign a letter in support of HB twenty one sixty eight.
I second that.
Yes, um, so this one is a.
Omnibus bill?
It, it really is, this was uh, SB one, uh, eleven fifty four was sponsored and developed by state agencies and Governor Kotek. As, as the write-up says, it's very far-reaching, and attempts to present several solutions and regulations in regard to the uh, to areas of polluted groundwater. If you, if the commission has not been aware of it, we wanted to get the text in your hand, to let you see on it. Uh, Representative Bobby Libby's uh, staff had presented a, a review, and as, as was mentioned in the Clean Water Consortium, that's kind of a, a specific, specific perspective of the bill. Uh, but we wanted to give you uh, options on it. One of the thi- uh, this was part of the uh, presentation or discussion, not necessarily Tamra's, uh, at last week's um, Senate uh, Natural Resources and Wildfire Committee hearing was to discuss this. And if you've seen the press, some of it says, uh, this is ambitious, but there's a lot of ambiguity and a lot of uncertainty here. One of the things that has been talked about, that's not in the bill right now, is if we were to provide uh, culinary water to people with wells, they would have to cap and abandon those wells. Um, that's been talked about, you don't see it in the bill directly right now, but there's, there's talk about those kind of things. And that would be an impact on people, particularly uh, with some of the projects we're considering right now, with Wes, Weskellin. They have one acre lots, we give them culinary water, and suddenly they don't have their well water, and they're having to water their whole parcel with, with city water. Um, so, those are kind of the issues that we really want to be aware of, that um, that could have a very impactful um, point for a lot of our people in unincorporated areas. And we don't want to get crosswired on that. Um, right now, at this point, and Tamra, if you, if you have any suggestions, I don't have any specific actions on it, but I would ask that the Board of Commissions dive, dive into it a little bit more, I'll be looking into it more as well. Um, and there's no action scheduled for this bill right now, but that can change in a heartbeat. There is um, and I would, um, if there is uh, red flags that you have, I'd love to work with Tamra to research those, and if we need to put a letter of support, or a letter of warning, I don't know if we want to fight against it, but just say, hey, we need, we're concerned about these issues, we'd be happy to develop those. So, has AOC taken any position on this?
I don't, I don't think, I think AOC is neutral on this one, because at, at this point, because it's so, it has, it has some really great aspects, and it has some less great aspects, and the whole. And I, I don't, nobody's really actually sure what the final form it's gonna be.
And, and as, and also, it's talking about impacting things where counties generally don't have a true role in it. So, AOC is very particular about, how's that gonna impact our county governance and operations? This is building in this unregulated kind of gray zone, that's been part of the issue of why we haven't been able to respond to the nitrate issue, and so it kind of dances between areas of influence and control.
So I agree with some of what you said there, guesses that, I like the ideas of that, it allows cities to expand services outside of UGP. I mean, I think that's great, to be able to address the issues that we have. But, you know, other aspects of the, this, that when it first came out, monitoring wells, you know, putting flow meters on irrigation wells, and things like that. I'm not in favor, but I was saying, I have to say, reading through the summary here, I found a lot more that I disliked than I liked, and so it's one of these. You're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, but I, I'm not in favor of what's there, whatever. There's a lot more that causes me heartburns, and, and, you know, yay.
Only time to talk waters for, for, to hear, oh, that's a lot out of the places too, but. I mean, I would think we should talk about, who's gonna monitor, because, you know, legislature closed in winter, twenty, twenty nine? What's the legislature?
Somewhere between the twentieth and twenty ninth, I think the, the drop dead date is the twenty ninth, which is when they usually go.
I think we should talk right now, who's gonna monitor, and what could our possible reactions be quickly? If we're going to move it to, you know, committee, we need to get somebody there to testify, you know? I, and first off, I think it's, it's important, I know Tamra does a lot of that, so, to have somebody keep a eye on this. So Gus is our, our, our straight guy too, so.
I, I, I would be more than happy to, to watch it, and to um, provide updates that are appropriate to share with other commissioners, that I'm doing it in a way that is, you know, like, here's an update, not, not any sort of discussion, but just, this is the update.
Well, I think that's step one, my, like I said, and step two is, do we have to hold a special meeting, decide what our reaction could be? Letter, contact whoever, send one of us down there to testify, you see what I'm saying? Uh, step number one is, they get the red flag up, they're talking about this, this is gonna happen on this date, you need to act like this.
So there, um, I was going to, for the end of the meeting, I was gonna ask the BOC for a special session next Tuesday for uh, for two small items that we need to come together. Could be a, a virtual special session. If you'd like us to get a little bit more information, and come back ready to discuss on eleven fifty four at that time, for plans of attack.
I think it should be an ongoing thing.
Of course.
Yes, no, I mean, you, you know, monitoring it, but letting the BOC know. So if we have a meeting, I think it should just be automatic, since we're in this timeline, and this thing, who knows where this hand could end, it might end up, you know?
Yeah.
That's my thought.
With the BOC's uh, permission, uh, I think Gus and I could do a daily check on, on the status of the bill, see, see what's going on, and if there's anything that necessitates a, a flag for uh, for action. We'd call it an immediate special session, an emergency session.
Yeah, I do think just on the record year aspect too, for the idea of an emergency session, I think it definitely applies for the legislative session at this point, right? When I know during lobbyists, when they're saying, oh, we're at the twenty-four hour or less type of, you know, notice, where all of a sudden, oh, they've set this for this hearing. Like, it might seem like the bill's been dead for a while, and all of a sudden, boom, it gets set, that happens, starting here near the end, where they change um, the response time. So I always think there's, allows that idea, if there needs to be a new position taken, or the response, or an emergency um, Board of Commission meeting to respond to that, that does apply, because we are forced into that, based on the scheduled legislature.
Yeah, we're getting to the point where things will start moving fast.
There's currently, um, no scheduled events for this particular bill, which is why, um, we're not exactly sure, my guess is it would get referred to rules, actually it's.
It has been referred to rules. Rules with a, with no designation for pass, but with amendments. And so this is, this is one of those ones that could suddenly just pop up and be moved on.
Or not, that, that actually also could happen, it just doesn't move, that's a possibility.
We'll know more than if it's um, in rules today on the twenty first, we'll know more, well, actually. I don't see this bill in rules, but at least scheduled for today, so we can monitor and see what. The, uh, just, just one note, a couple of these things, I just compared Isaac Ensco's, um, he did a really good summary, but I think that was an earlier version. So, um, things have changed a little bit, and Isaac Ensco's, Bobby Libby's chief of staff. A couple of these things would require or allow state agencies to go through administrative rulemaking process, and that's um, another opportunity to influence that, that piece, like the trespassing piece, I think is what Commissioner Winholtz was talking about, to inspect and monitor wells, there's also a provision in here that would allow DEQ staff to enter property for septic systems, to see if they're properly functioning.
That wasn't the one, I, I agree with you, I don't like that aspect, but that wasn't the one that I was referring to, I think that there's something in there. Understanding was that they were going to put meters on wellheads.
It, it isn't in there, but it had been discussed, and that was something that Commissioner Doran mentioned that at the, the Senate hearing that. It's not technically in there, but there's some vagities about it, that, yeah.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of questions, also, an exempt well in here gives the county the authority to, to sort of regulate those, um, that.
It's just a new power.
It, it's not sure a county would want that. Actually, in a roundabout way, it does that, it says that a county may prohibit development, residential development, if the development relies on an exempt well. Yumitala County lived through that, um, very similar recommendation, I think if somebody's gonna, my experience, if, if a domestic exempt well needs to be regulated, it should be consistent with other water, right? Which would be Water Resources Department.
And maybe I interpreted wrong, but I was reading through some of that stuff, my take on it was is that you could be limiting and shutting down, somebody building a new house on.
Yes, yes, and.
Not in favor. When we already have a housing crisis in the area.
That's why that earlier bill that you submitted support for, felt like a win-win, as opposed to, you know, um.
This thing.
This has sanctions, and this.
Okay, there's information, what's there?
Information.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Name is Vincent Guerrero, I am the Assistant County Administrator, and I'm here to answer some questions regarding, and or, and just go over um, information regarding the arena remodel. And so, I'm sure you read the information, uh, last year, we had some funding uh, available to us, to rehab part of the arena, um, or there were some snafus that happened, some issues, that came up, it didn't happen, we pushed it to twenty twenty-five. And um, initially, we had sent out a, an RFP, um, but it didn't include, um, it did not include um, prevailing wage, and so we had to send that again, um, which came back pretty high, a lot more than what we could afford, and there was only one proposal that had come to us. Um, we talked to the um, the contractor that submitted the proposal, and because of our budget constraints, they were willing to work with us within our budget, and that is the information that you see before you.
So just to add on to that, um, we had um, allocated amounts of eighty-nine thousand dollars in our capital funds for the, for fair. Uh, we also have additional funds for a large capital project that, that we're looking at. Um, in discussions, we figured about a hundred thousand would be about the mark that we could go with current reserves and funds that are available. Um, so Vincent negotiated the project down to that, get, get the results we need while keeping it under cost. And so, we would ask, um, we have this contract, um, since it technically wasn't specifically outlined on it, and it goes above the amount that was budgeted, we have to bring that to the BOC. And so we're asking for a motion to approve the contract in the amount of ninety-eight thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty-three cents, and for me to e- execute those documents. And then uh, we are looking to do a supplemental budget, most likely on the twenty-fifth, separate from the budget. Um, and to kind of reconcile these things, but the second motion is to um, allow the uh, County Administrator and Finance Director to uh, prepare that supplemental budget for that eighty-six hundred dollars, and, and get that ready for uh, reconciliation, so we have that fully funded.
Am I missing something, or is there a cover sheet in there? There is?
Page zero three.
Okay, that's fine, we're just not tracking it very well here, so, okay, uh, so, questions about?
On the contract, section five, five point one, and then the first five point two, I read it's pretty similar to me. Yeah, really similar. Uh, Kevin's got his hand raised, and then five point two underneath that.
Okay, so it looks like, I think.
Did you have a comment on that?
Uh, yeah, just a, just a clarification that the, this was not included at all in the, in the current fiscal year's budget. So it's not an adjustment to an amount that was included, it's, uh, there's some uh, surplus funds in a capital reserve for the fair from interest generation on, on grant funding that we've received, that we'll be able to uh, through a supplemental budget, um, if it's, if that's approved and adopted, transfer that to the, um, Fair Operating Fund, and uh, be able to cover this expenditure. I just want to add that clarification.
Thank you. So on the contract, we want to strike out five point one, and the first five point two, remember that to five point one?
Yes.
Yes, and we would have that done before I signed it and sent it out. Anything else that needs to be fixed on it? I gotta put him out of job for, uh, we're working on putting him out of job.
Under eight point oh, hundred, ten, it's kind of a typo, the save, it looks like there's an extra space between the A and the B.
I don't know, anything, anytime I put my name on stuff, I don't, I didn't work on it.
I'd just like to get it to the point where I put him out of the job, because we have those taken care of. Eight point oh and five point two, uh, with those corrections to be made before I sign, uh, we'd ask for the motion to approve.
So I'll motion to approve the contract at Silver Creek Construction LLC in the amount of ninety-eight thousand seventy-two thousand and eighty-three cents for our grounds. Arena wall rehabilitation project, and direct County Administrator executes the documents, but the changes to the contract is already identified.
Second.
The second for the discussion, all in favor?
With that, I move to direct staff to prepare a supplemental budget to account for the additional eight thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents, necessary to fund this uh, project from either reserves or the capital resources as best determined by consensus of the County Administrator and Finance Director. Uh project from either reserves or the capital resources as best determined by consensus of the county administrator and finance director.
Second and further discussion.
Chair, I'm I'm a little bit, if I can ask a question there. I'm a little bit confused on that on that motion. When we refer to the additional, that was kind of what I was talking about. There's not. An existing budget amount for this, so when you refer to the additional, I I think it might be better, I think that's incorrect. I think it might be better to just direct staff to prepare a supplemental budget to uh make the necessary. Adjustments to. You know, uh cover the cost of this contract rather than being that specific.
Did that motion get seconded?
It did. I could I could make a friendly amendment.
Okay.
And so uh I will I will amend the motion to say uh. Direct staff to create a supplemental budget to account for the additional. Uh eight thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents.
I would specifically leave out the dollar amount. I don't um I don't know where that that dollar amount came from, so. Just a supplemental budget to cover the cost of this expenditure. I think if you leave it broader than that, then I'll bring back a supplemental budget that'll have. An exact amount in it um at that point.
Okay, you make it really short. I direct staff to create a supplemental budget to uh. Get the funds needed for this project.
Does that sound good, Kevin?
Yep.
Second.
Moving second and quick. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, motion carried.
At this point, I thought you might say. Motion to direct staff to personal budget to make it so and just.
Make it so. Do whatever Kevin says. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Correspondence, that way, you got a correspondent?
Um yes. First thing was, we just have a thank you card um from Casey Anderson. He was our rodeo queen. How you guys would all like to see that?
Thank you cards.
Thank you for making my life.
And then the second. Yeah, that's the one that you saw earlier.
Very nice. Very appreciated. Okay, uh then our other uh.
I just was passed out before the meeting. Um it's going to happen in rural fire protection district. Um their request for funding from the Meat Ridge East County Assessment Fund.
I guess my question. This isn't really a business item, just a question to Kevin. This. Oh. Oh, they did address it to greetings Commissioners, so. It, okay. I withdraw my request. Request. I get it now. All right. Uh any other?
That's it.
Then we're gonna. Get ready to go into executive sessions.
Commissioner reports.
Oh, Commissioner reports, sir.
Oh, so yesterday, the um C D A met. And. There was a budget that was adopted by the. Budget Committee. With a recommendation for the whole board to. Pass. The consensus of the board was to have everybody take it back to. Their body to see if they were in favor of continuing to fund the C D A. And I'd have to dig through my papers there, but. But the the current budget that they were proposing for the next year, it would, which would start July one. County's portion would be roughly two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars apart. And so there was that, and there was. An update from. The Port of Umatilla. That they said that that morning that they had signed. A letter with the. County of Umatilla. The agreement that. The lawsuit will be dropped. Now, what will happen is they said that the. Attorneys will be reaching out to each other and the other entities' respective attorneys. And that we have to provide buy-off on it. And then the C D A will have to. Vote to ratify the agreement that's. Been. It's down between Umatilla County and the Port of Umatilla.
Just just for my clarification, they want us to approve of their own internal. So.
Fight? I have, obviously, I have not seen the letter yet.
Okay.
But it's the middle store afterwards, you know, she came in after that, had been talked about, and I was talking to her. She had gotten an email from their attorney. Talking about this. And so she read it, and it. Kind of ratifies and talks about how all the property is gonna be split up on their side of the county line, which, my perspective, I don't think. There.
That's their business.
And it does then ratify basically what had been talked about, as well as on the moral county side. We go to, you know, the Port of Morrow, which is tracks A, B, and C, which is the two industrial properties in the southwest corner. The six hundred and forty acre parcel. On the north. And. You know, as she read through it, again, I have not read it myself. It sounds like nothing really affects us, so we're not really going to. But, you know, they want us to give it its blessing. Why that is, I'm not sure. You know, one of the things that, again. I haven't read it, but and it's their own business, but the. Umatilla County hasn't been paying its share of the assessments of the C D A. But what was relating to me is that under the negotiation. That the Port of Umatilla is gonna pick up the delinquency of Umatilla County and pay those on their behalf. Again, that does not affect us, but I just. But so Justin, do you suppose that that um communication will be going to the special counsel we hired out of Central Oregon?
It is, and yes, that's what I I I'm aware of, some of the things you're talking about just from yesterday, and so our plan. I hopefully setting this for an executive session to have that counsel also talk to both you guys. I know there's questions asking, hey, how this happened, so. Um yeah, I can pour that on to you, but also I think the important part is setting up and I kind of find a time for an executive session to talk with him. Um have the council come and try and explain it all too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was almost thinking about today, maybe that that was just the human yesterday afternoon, and I realized, oh, I think our executive session is limited on topic, so. I couldn't slip it in front of you today.
That's, so so the good thing is is that it looks like it's gonna be done. The C D A is going to be going forward with everything. And. It doesn't seem like it's going to really affect anything on our side, other than that we can move forward instead of being. Definitely.
Ten months and, yes. Uh yeah, so uh more more of a comment. I just wanted to say uh on the record that I think when we have things on our agenda. Uh that it's really important that uh we, at the very least, discuss them. Uh even if we're not in favor of them, because uh it's part of, you know, our our job of being transparent, both with the public, and this is the only time we can talk to each other. Uh I I can't know, and you guys can't know what I think about anything that's on our agendas outside of these meetings, so. I just wanted to emphasize that I think if we've got something on the agenda, even if we disagree with it, we need to talk about it so that we can. Understand where we're each coming from.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh we conclude our Commissioner reports.
And Chair, there's one before we go into the executive session. Um we do have uh two items that we need to do a special session for next week. I, if possible, I'd like to do that Tuesday morning. Uh just asking the B O C if that's if that's something supportable and we. Schedule a little. I think so. So we would be looking. At um. Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. At nine A M, and we can host it virtually if you'd like, or um and should be just a short discussion, probably three, four minutes.
Okay. Good me.
Thank you. We'll get that scheduled.
Okay, with that, we will move to executive session. And let's get the first one off here. And moral county board of commissioners now leaving executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dash six six oh two H two H, which allows the commission to meet the executive session. To consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to the current litigation. Or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything. Said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Now, Justin, do we need to? Come out of this one to do?
We may. Um I think. Yeah, I think we would, it's potential, I guess. I can explain to you.
Not 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 business, to just to do D.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on.
We have two sets of uh.
Oh, to come out to go from. Oh, I would say, no, I think we could. Do both executive sessions, list them both, and then we come out and say, part of this one, we have action for. And A, here's the action. I don't know if there's any action needed for ten B.
No, I'm saying.
Oh, geez, I'm confused, I guess, okay.
I'm saying. Do we, do we combine the two executive sessions?
So.
Or do we come back out and then go into the second executive session?
We can do both. I I think sometimes we can combine them together if we list both of those and say. Because if we go back out and come back in, then we have to get everyone back into the video to do. Go back in, call it again, then go back out.
Just because I'm talking about legality.
Legality, I don't see an issue why there's no basis where we need.
I don't want to have this completely.
Yeah, no, we along with the name that we require executive session for both of these topics, under both of these conditions. Then that that's fine.
Okay, so while we do the second one. Okay. At the same time as the previous page, we will do, the moral county board of commissioners. Will meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dash six six zero two D, which allows the commission to meet. The exes- executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to care on labor negotiations. And the same conditions and the rules apply to the news media. Now, what did they decide on business after? Okay, potential, there will be potential decision or action items as a result of this executive sessions. So we will be coming back into open meeting.
Yes. Um we have um. I'll start putting people out. We do have the sheriff who's uh doing remotely and is pertinent to the second item, and I'd ask that we just do the first item. Or the second item first, let him uh get taken care of, and that's why Lindsay's here and Brian's here. So and then we can do, you're okay staying. So. And I'll get the rest out.
Want me to save for the first one or just come back? I mean, yeah, for the second one, when we come back, give the other, I'm not. But it's up to you guys. I'll carry the one.
Yeah, stay for both.
Good.
Okay. And I think we've. So you talk to your.
Talk to him sometimes. I do talk to my head.
I I have.
He's probably even censoring me.
I I I think so, yes.
Okay. We are now back at open session and uh. I think you'll have a motion. Would be made.
Yes. Yes. Set a line. I uh move to authorize the Human Resources Director to open contract negotiations with the Marl County Sheriff's Office Association related to scheduling and overtime provisions.
Second.
Move and second it and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed, motion carried. Okay, any other business to come for the commission? Not all the meeting returns. We have, we have stuff to sign, don't we?